The thing we do is, uh, is in the daylight and in the public, so you hear about it. All right? So that's five, we got four more. What am I, you just, there you go.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, a retired 100% soldier who moves or retired from Augusta, from Fort Gordon, and moves here to Augusta, how would, and he's purchasing a house that's been lived in, how would that affect his situation or her situation?
All right, Scott Roundtree.
All right, uh, so the question was about a 100% disabled veteran who owns a home here, and in Georgia, there is an exemption in place.
Purchasing a home. Purchasing.
Purchasing a home. Okay? And so whatever the value of the home is at that time, um, whenever that homestead begins, that will be the base here, all right? Um, in Georgia, there is an exemption for disabled veterans, so this would not impact or change anything that's already authorized and available for disabled veterans. So you would get that exemption, uh, if the floating homestead is in place. You would also have that benefit, so that would be the existing homestead that you have, which exempts roughly, looking at fair market value, roughly $250,000 worth of value. And, and then the appreciation index would also apply.
Okay, I'm like the lady back there. 2022, the assessment on my house went up over $30,000. I appealed it. I got my letter, certified letter for my date, two months after my date. That was due to the postal officer. They said they were gonna reschedule that, but in the meantime, I got a new assessment for 2023. I appealed that. I finally got a hearing later on in 2023 about the first one. The second assessment had gone up over $30,000 also. No improvements to the house since 2011, no improvements to the property. So why did I get over $70,000 in assessment when nothing had been done to the house? It was the same house, same ranch, three two-bed, three-bedroom and two-bath house. And that was it.
All right, Scott Roundtree.
So over the last two years, the majority of property owners, myself included, that got increases were due to reassessments. We follow the market, we try to determine fair market value based on what's been going on in our community. You may not have physically improved the property, but what has improved is the way we value properties. So for decades, there have been property owners paying what it's worth, more than it's worth, but a far majority less than what it's worth, according to the tax records. And so what we've been doing is improving our valuations and our methodologies. The market since COVID, on average, has increased homes over 50%. And so we're just reflecting what the market has been doing. And it seems like an outrageous number, but it's, it's born in fact on what people are paying, that the market has appreciated greatly. And this specific legislation is one way that the legislature is attempting to curb that impact for property owners.
Exactly, but I was told that the reason my values went up was, you know, this home values had gone up because building materials had gone up. That's not my problem. Why would my house have to go up when I haven't done anything to it? You know, that's, that's not right.
The objective for our office is to determine what someone, a willing buyer, would pay for your property. So we look at what the market's doing and adjust based on that research that we do.
All right, three more. Ma'am?
I have a question, but it has nothing to do with the House bill, but it has to do with looking at creating new sources of revenue for taxes being paid. In some states, people who live, who work in the city and are paid by the city, but they live somewhere else, they are required to pay a certain percent city taxes. Why hasn't Richmond County, Augusta ever considered that as a source of revenue? Where you have people who are living, who are working in the city, being paid by the city, but taking their dollars somewhere else to develop other places?
That's a great question. I'm gonna lean on my legal counsel, but I don't think in Georgia law that we can tax a person based on where they live. We, we can't, if they work in Richmond County, we can't, and we can't add a tax to, to, uh, to them based on them not living in Augusta, Richmond County. I think it's the Georgia statute that we can't do that.
Job description. And all the pickup trash, you wanna work for the city, you gotta live in the city.
Again, if I lean on my legal counsel, because that's been brought up, we cannot determine where someone lives, and we just can't do that.
You're not. Either, either get the job or you don't get the job.
Well, thank you.
And especially department heads.
Again, again, General Counsel, can you come up and give, I'm, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let the, the attorney.
You can't make residency a condition of employment.
Come, come into the mic, Jim.
You can't make residency a condition of employment. That's the statute. You can't make, you cannot make residency a condition of employment under state statute. So in other words, in order to get the job, you can't, you can't say that the person, if you want this job, you have to live in this county. That's just prohibited by state law.
Okay. Is it, is it true that if a person lives in South Carolina, and when he pays taxes, if he lived in South Carolina, worked in Augusta, does he still pay Augusta, Georgia tax?
He, he would pay South Carolina income tax, and he would pay Georgia income tax, but he would not be paying property taxes. These are property debt, property tax discussions, not income tax discussions. But you are correct, they would pay to those states.
All right, thank you. We moving back to House Bill 581? We got, what, one or two more?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Eleven. Come on, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm not sure if he was clear with answering your question. So that military veteran is gonna pay that tax first, and then want downtown to do their homestead exemption, then moving forward, they'll receive the exemption. Okay. Now, as far as the chamber being against the bill due to commercial development and all that good stuff, if it's yes, we, the people in South Augusta have been long time asking for more restaurants and things of that nature, which fall under commercial, to be enriched in South Augusta. So for the chamber concern on the commercial, uh, property owners to have their exemption, that is understood because yes, if they have to pay more.
Not, not, not have an exemption.
Or, I'm sorry, um, to, for them to receive the, their, uh, credits.
Or increase, increase.
Or, or the increase.
Increase taxes.
Increase of taxes, um, excuse me. Um, what does that say still for South Augusta? It's kinda like we're dined if we do, and we're dined if we don't, 'cause right now we don't have that, and we still don't have the restaurants and stuff in South Augusta. However, if we go according to the chamber, are they going to emphasize anything being for South Augusta? So the benefits seem, seem to only be reaped by the downtown and other areas.
That's not true in that. There's a lot of commercial property owners. If you look at your, um, insurance offices, nail salons, it's every small business, you see a lone tobacco on Windsor Springs Road.
We do have that, but we want restaurants.
Well, we, we're gonna get restaurants, I assure you that, but the, here's the problem, here's the problem I have with the former mayor, Bob Young. He and I have had a lively debate about this. He said, "Mayor, property owners are just gonna pass it on to the consumer, so you're gonna pay more." Not every business can pass on increases to subsidize increase in taxes. So I think we need to be diligent in how we make sure we apply this. I, you know, as mayor, the last thing I wanna do is cause more businesses to leave South Augusta and to leave Augusta because they feel as though they're being taxed to death. So that is a concern of mine. I'm also concerned, I'm gonna come to you, I'm also concerned about the, the senior who's on a fixed income, whose property values keep going up, and they only receive so much money every month. So there's a delicate balance that we have to do, the, the state legislature. You could blame House Bill 581 on Lieutenant Governor Burt Jones. He, he, he came up with this, a great idea, in an, in an, in an effort to protect property owners, but now it's incumbent upon us and our, and our governing body to make the best decision that's in the best interest of Augusta, Richmond County. As I mentioned, there's 158 other counties that are toiling with this, another 537 cities. We just have to make the best decision that fits best and works best for Augusta, Richmond County. And that's what we're trying to do. That's why we're here asking for your feedback, and we're trying to crunch the numbers to find out where we can get to make sure we get more restaurants in South Augusta and we protect these elderly senior who can only pay so much, and that's what we're trying to do. That's why we're here.
Thank you, Mayor.
You got it. All right, we have one more. Come on, boss man.
So, uh, if we don't get restaurants here or, or the entertainment, you could raise your taxes all you want, but we're gonna take that money that we have, we're gonna go to other counties where the restaurant's at, where the entertainment's at. So, I mean, we gonna, we, you can raise your taxes, but we gonna take our money elsewhere if we don't get the stuff on this side of town.
That's why we trying not to raise the taxes, boss. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's now 7:20. I'm gonna turn it back over to the administrator, but listen, I highly encourage you to stay engaged in the conversation around House Bill 581, and I told you, this body has not made a decision. We have, a lot of people think that we have, but by law, we, we have to hold these public hearings, and we wanna continue to hear from you. So I'm gonna let the administrator come up and give you the other dates, and I promise you, when this comes before a vote before your governing body, I highly encourage you to come down there and look us in the eyes, and let us give you an explanation as to why we voted the way we voted. And I can tell you, and I can assure you, I'll be prepared to give you my reasoning on how I vote in or out, and it's gonna be in the best interest of everybody in Augusta, Richmond County. Madam Administrator, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. So I-
Yes, sir. So I, oh, everyone, this was, it's a lot. It's a lot to take in. I'll be honest with you. It was hard for me to quite, you know, do I go in, do I go out? Because of all of the respective information, it was really not clear. I understand the gentleman's point about making sure, you know, you know, what is the benefit? And we voted in for it while we standing here, while we having a discussion. Ultimately, we are required to have that discussion, and we are required to get that feedback from you. Because your, your input is gonna help make the, help the governing body determine how they wanna proceed. So it's important that we hear from you. Now, I hear you complaining about the budget too, and you talking about cuts and all that good stuff. The next time we have those budget hearings, I wanna see the room pass, listening to how we talk about the budget, so you can help us make the determination of what needs to be reduced. We need your input. Your input is valuable as it relates to everything that we do with the governing, the governing, um, body and control of what we do for you, because we're here to serve you. So if you're not happy with how we serving you, show up and show out. Now be careful about showing up, they have marshals off the side. But show up at least and give us that feedback, because your feedback is important. Okay? So I'll be honest, you know, I look at it, I've talked to several people about it. I've talked to Tim, and I've talked to Scott, and I've talked to everyone. You know, what, what does this benefit us? You, it's, it's almost as simple as saying if we stay in, right? Everybody who's living in their home right now, they're living in their primary home, guess what? They're gonna reap the benefit. But the businesses and the non-homestead are not. So you have to look at the balance. It's gonna kinda from, you know, they're gonna have about 30% of the responsibility, as it was demonstrated, and the other group may have about 70%, right? So then we have to look at, well, is that equal? Probably not. So when those businesses or those non-homesteads get affected by that increase, guess what's gonna happen? They may have to shift some of that burden on with the respective cost that they're gonna be charging you, right? Because they're gonna have to do something to keep their business operating, am I right? I have a business owner back there, right? When you get that increased cost, man with the hat, when you get that increased cost to your business, you got to kinda raise your prices just a little bit to the consumer. So that's what's gonna probably have to happen if that should go, if we continue to stay opted in. Every municipality, all 159 organizations and school boards are automatically opted in. However, you have to vote to opt out. If we do nothing, we're automatically opted in. Okay? So what we're trying to do, because the bill was so confusing in how it was written and how it was presented to you on the referendum, is to give you that opportunity to give us some feedback. Okay? So if you go buy a new home, just as he said, you gonna have to pay that assessed value. You don't reap the benefits until the next year. So at the end of the day, the governing body needs a certain amount of money to continue to operate. So then we look at this floss. If you vote for the floss, we have to depend on those sales tax. Now that's not, you can't really depend on that. That's something that moves, that's fluid. So how can we bu, balance our budget with fluid dollars that we don't know aren't necessarily gonna be the same to offset? So then you have to look at the respective military increases. So somebody's gonna pay regardless. So can you now see how difficult that decision is for this governing body? It is a very difficult decision, because 62% of our voters in Augusta, Richmond County supported it. I've talked to many other agencies and many other municipalities, and sometimes after they leave these meetings, everybody who voted for it said, "You know what, I didn't know that." And they went, they start, "We, we need to opt out," because if you opt out, it keeps it like it is. So we just wanna make sure that we hear all of the respective comments, all of the respective feedback, and that our governing body has all the information that they can get from you, so that we can make the best decision. With that being said, our next public hearing, if you not doing anything, you just wanna see us again, our next public hearing will be on February 11th at 6:00 PM at One Row Community Center. Then our last one, February 11th, almost the same dates, they are the same dates as the Richmond County Board of Education. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Then February 18th at 11:00 AM at the Augusta Municipal Building and the municipal commission chamber, the lead board chamber. They will be hearing, having another hearing. We wanna thank you for being here tonight, but we wanna see you back when we talking about budget and everything else, because we want you to know your, your input matters to us. Thank you. Everybody have a good night. We'll see you at the next one.